Thank you, everybody. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustment. And with that, I'd like to do a couple of things of housekeeping before we get started. One is, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent as the ringtones will disrupt the meeting. And number two, we run an orderly meeting, which means, I love a full house, but in order for a full house to work very well, we must be courteous and kind to each other, both physically and verbally. And so, please keep that in mind as we continue through all the applications tonight, okay? Those who wish to speak will be asked to speak at certain times during each application, so please be respectful to the other people who are speaking and maintain your comments to yourself until it becomes your turn to speak, okay? With that, we'll go ahead and get the roll call.
Gail Oberg.
Here.
Steve Bogert.
Here.
Lori Gibbs.
Yeah, here.
Mike Foot.
Here.
Roland Magu.
Yeah. Okay. Let the records indicate, we have a full board tonight. So, next is the acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. All those who have reviewed the minutes, any changes?
I have none. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Presenting.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to accept, as written. All those in favor?
Right.
Okay, motion passes. We're gonna go ahead, we have no public hearings to continue tonight, so we'll move on past that. We're into the public hearings. A consideration of vote, note, the purpose of this agenda section is for the board to have a presentation for the applicant and a public hearing for the public to provide input. The board may also deliberate the application, decide and conduct a final vote at this time. All right, for the first application, it's a 263 Lakeside Ave Administrative Appeal, in that we have received communications indicating that both attorneys agree to table this appeal until our next meeting. I think one of the attorneys is here, and I would like to make sure that that's agreeable.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and move this administrative appeal, Application 30AA 263 Lakeside Ave, to the next meeting. And that's in the form of a motion. All those in favor? No, I need a second.
Second.
Second? And all those in favor of moving it? Boom. Okay. So it will be first on the agenda at the next meeting. So all those folks that are here for the 263 Administrative Appeal for the cease and desist order is gonna be next month, okay?
Do you have a date for that?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a specific date for that?
Uh...
Not, I can't...
Eighteenth. Eighteenth.
Welcome.
So at this time, I'm gonna wait a few minutes and allow everybody to...
Now we can type the floor. That's fine. That's it. Nice to meet you. Yeah, I... Well, like I said, first we have to decide whether or not we have jurisdiction before we start deciding to sponsor.
We can't discuss it.
I was only chatting. I know. I was never gonna type mine, Lori. I need money for that.
You know, I've seen public info, for CIP, it was over thirty people.
Well, that would be good.
That was a year ago. Really?
People should've done it tonight, right? Killed two birds with one stone.
We're all gonna say the same thing.
Uh?
Usually it's correct.
The next application is 2019-0024, variance 221 Pleasant Street variance. Applicant requests a variance from Article 6, Section 23533, maximum residential unit density to allow for an addition of two one-bedroom apartments above the existing garage. So the applicant, come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help you, and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm Patrick Wood of Patrick Wood Law Office. I represent Paul Duggan, who is here this evening. He's the owner of the property at 221 Pleasant Street. We have submitted the application for the variance, as the chair briefly summarized it. Right now, the property has a single-family residence on it and four apartments. The proposal is to add two additional one-bedroom residential apartments above the existing You have the application, I believe, before you. I would like to just very quickly go through that. I'll come back to the memo in a few minutes, but the authorization has been submitted, signed by Mr. Duggan. We have the abutters list, and we have an existing conditions plan. It shows the property as it currently exists. As I said, there are four apartments above a garage building and a single-family home. There are four garages underneath the four apartments. The apartments are located on the Pleasant Street side of the garage. The proposal is to add two more apartments on the other side of the garage. And there's some photographs that we'll take a look at as well. The proposal would include the addition of some surface parking. We need eleven parking spaces. They were, they're shown on the proposed site plan. This lot was created well over a hundred years ago. There is no subdivision plan showing the lot. Mr. Duggan acquired the property by deed in May of 2017, and I've attached a copy of that deed. You can see from the description, which is the original description going back to the eighteen hundreds. Next, I've attached a copy of the tax map, a reduced copy of the tax map that shows this lot, highlighted in yellow. Next, there's a Google Maps aerial photograph of the property, and it's right in the center of that photograph. There's a second aerial photograph, close-up, from the tax map of this property at 221 Pleasant The next exhibit is a copy of the zoning map, and the area highlighted along Pleasant Street and Dartmouth Street and Harvard Street and a little bit of Oak Street is in the RG zoning district. Next, I've attached a list of all of the uses, as shown on the tax records, for all of the property in that particular RG district, indicating whether there's a one-family property or two-family or multifamily or commercial. And then finally, as far as the exhibits, we have the photographs, and I think it's important to look at the photographs. The first picture is a picture of the existing structure. The apartments are located above the garage. The proposal is to add the two apartments on the easterly side of the property. You can see it on the next picture, which shows the garage, it would be above those two garage bays. And on the next picture, there's looking at the garages themselves. You see the location. The final picture shows the back of the property. You can see the brush on the right-hand side. There was a swimming pool at one point in the back of the property that's been filled and leveled, or leveled, yeah, filled and leveled. Finally, we have a copy of some floor plans that have been prepared to show the proposed apartments and what they're going to look like. So unless you have any questions on those exhibits, I would like to get into the arguments for the variance.
May I ask just a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woods? So what we're looking at here is two apartments just above these two garage doors, or only talking about that's a garage, that we're looking at two apartments above?
That's right.
All right.
Okay, and, and, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, and each of these, you've given us one floor plan, each of these are a mirror, they're mirror images, so it'd be two apartments identical to this single floor plan.
Yes.
No.
I'm sorry, I think, if I understand your question...
The floor plans are slightly different, but the square footage is probably the same.
Yeah. I think that's right. Is that...
I've only got one floor plan.
No, there's two. You'll have one floor pan here, and then you'll have the house.
Oh, I see, okay. I apologize. I apologize.
No, that's all right.
They're separated a little bit, but they're there.
Okay, I apologize.
So there's one, one above the other one, okay? So, again, what we're asking for is a variance from the density requirement under the zoning ordinance. The lot itself is approximately 25,437 square feet, which is just a little over half an acre. According to the assessment records, the house was built sometime around 1860, which is when the lot was originally created as well. Sometime between 1889 and 1999, the barn and the adjacent area were converted to four apartments. We haven't been able to find when that took place. We've asked the city, we've gone back through their, their records, but they don't have any record as to when those apartments were built. I do know that I previously represented the owner before Mr. Duggan and that property, and it's been an apartment complex for decades, I know that, but I don't know when they were actually built. Now, the city council, as you know, has recognized the need for affordable housing, and we're sort of blessed in many ways in this community by having so many things to offer, and we've built a number of houses over the years that were pretty good-sized. But what we're finding is that the market for the large houses isn't exactly what it used to be. People are looking for smaller places to live, and people's circumstances have changed. We all have gotten a bit older. Most of us are looking, are beginning the process, at least, of looking to downsize. So what we're talking about here for apartments, these one-bedroom apartments, meets a specific need that the city has recognized, a need for apartments that are smaller than the two, three, four-bedroom apartments that have historically been built, or the two or three, four-bedroom houses that have been built. And there is a market for these. It's clear from that current rental that there is a market, and many of the people that are in these are elderly, they don't have a car. That may change, of course, we can't guarantee that people wouldn't have a car, we've provided the parking, but the reality is, these types of apartments generally will use or provide a residential space for people that are not the type that are going to be driving at least very much. But we will have eleven parking spaces to meet the code. Pleasant Street is a residential street, it has municipal utilities, then walking distance of downtown, Opichi Park, Pleasant Street School, the public library, the fire department, and a number of churches. The new apartments will be built in accordance with current building, electrical, plumbing, and life safety codes, and they would be hardwired direct to the fire department. We talked about the need for sprinkling the units, and the fire department said we didn't need to do that, so long as they're hardwired. That works for us. The housing section of the master plan encourages infill development, and that's sort of what we're talking about here. This is an existing neighborhood, and we're talking about the idea of infilling, adding a couple of apartments, there are small apartments, to meet the need that's expressed from the So then we get into the, the legal aspects of it. And what we want to do, first of all, is we look at the zoning ordinance itself. 235-3 says that these zoning ordinances are made with reasonable consideration, among other things, to the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and with a view to conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout such municipality. And as you know, the city has also gone through some major changes with that in the downtown area. So we're gonna see how that works as well. But the idea is, we want the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality. We have divided the city into a number of different districts. This property is in the residential general district, which is designed to allow a variety of housing types and supporting facilities. It makes practical medium densities of residential development. The district shall normally be located within relatively easy vehicular or pedestrian access to business or commercial areas, and public utilities shall be available prior to the time of zoning. Well, we've had water and sewer out there for a long time, I'm not sure when they were put out there, but they've been there a long time. It has all of the electric, gas, telephone. Section 32 of the zoning ordinance talks about the buildable land area. No principal building or use shall be constructed or established on a lot having less than the prescribed minimum lot size, except as provided in the non-conforming use provisions of the ordinance. And under section, or subsection D of Section 32, in the RG zone, lots should have, if they're served by municipal water and sewer, should have at least 3,000 square feet of buildable land area. Our proposal would have 3,600 and 33 square feet per unit. And then Table 2, or Table 1 of the ordinance talks about the residential density, and in that ordinance, or the table, it talks about six units per acre in the RG zone. Then we look at the non-conforming provisions in Section 65. And under D, use of a non-conforming lot, subsection 1, substandard lot size, when a non-conforming lot can be used in conformity with all applicable regulations except for minimum lot size, then the lot may be used for a permitted use, subject to all other standards which apply. Well, these apartments would meet all of the setback requirements. The lot meets all of the other requirements except for the size, and it's the size that controls the density. So under Section 65D1, this permitted use, and multifamily is permitted in this district with a special exception, and since we're already there, we think that we meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which is important, because the very first thing that we have to look at from a legal point of view is, will this variance be contrary to the public interest? And the way the Supreme Court has interpreted that, they say, "To be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives." Well, the basic zoning objective here is, as we've seen, is to provide a variety of housing in this zoning district. And of the houses in this area, residential properties, approximately forty percent of them are either two-family or multifamily, a little over forty percent. There are two commercial spaces in there as well. So we have a district that is already diverse. So we're meeting the neighborhood in that sense, but here, we're not changing that basic diversity by adding two small apartments. Another thing to look at is, does it alter the essential character of the locality or threaten public health, safety, or welfare? And the character of the neighborhood, as I said, is a diverse residential mix, single-family, two-family, multifamily. And we're not changing that character at all. In fact, we're living within that character. The abutting property at 211 Pleasant Street has six dwellings. There are two properties that have five units, 201 Pleasant Street and 221 Pleasant Street. And there is one property that has four units, 193. There are twelve properties that have two dwellings, and two properties, one of the Harvard Street School and the Unitarian Church, are commercial or institutional. And the remaining twenty-four properties are single-family. And again, I have the list of those different properties attached as an exhibit, so you can see which they are. The multifamily dwellings are basically, the four multifamily properties on Pleasant Street are next to each other. Seven of the sixteen properties on Dartmouth Street are two-family properties, and five of those seven are on the westerly side of Dartmouth Street, which is on the Pleasant Street side of Dartmouth Street. And two of the three residential properties on Harvard Street are two-family properties. And I, I'm using the information from the tax records. I have not actually inspected those buildings, so I'm not going to go onto earth and say they're all just two bedrooms or two apartments. There may be something different, but that's what the assessment cards show. So do we violate the spirit or the public interest in this proposal? We do not think we do. The public interests are protected by standards which prohibit the granting of a variance that would be inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. What we're proposing is a permitted use, a modification of that permitted use, but it's still a permitted use. It's a use that's compatible with the existing neighborhood. So we believe that we have met that first standard. It is not contrary to the public interest. The next question is, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And again, that's very similar to the public interest argument. Would it violate the basic zoning objectives in a manner that would alter the essential character of the locality? Or does it threaten the public health, safety, or welfare? Again, the locality is such that it's a diverse type of housing already. We're not changing that diversity. We're not putting some commercial use in the middle of a residential use, we're just using a similar residential use in a similar-located residential neighborhood. And we're not creating any hazards to health or safety or the welfare of the community or any of the neighbors. There already are residential units, multifamily, in this neighborhood, we're not changing that concept. So we think it is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, especially consistent with the need to provide additional affordable housing. The third question is substantial justice, and that's one of those issues that kind of goes to the heart of what we're talking about. It has to be something that's real, and what the Supreme Court has said, has said perhaps the only guiding rule on this factor is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. And under our constitution, the rights of property owners are extremely important. Article 12 of Section 1 of the Constitution makes it very clear that property rights are to be recognized and protected. So the question that you look at in this one is, does this proposal create a situation where denying the variance would provide a benefit to the city? What would be the benefit to the city by denying this variance? Two less affordable apartments for people who don't need large apartments. We know that the city council and the city has recognized the need for affordable housing. The master plan has said we need to add a number of affordable housing units over the years since the master plan was adopted. This meeting that requirement, the applicant currently resides at the property, maintains it, he's been making improvements to the property since he's owned it, again, he would hardwire the property to the fire department. The new apartments would be built in accordance with current standards and codes. Denying the variance for the additional two units, in our opinion, would not be a reasonable trade-off for the substantial benefit the city and the neighborhood will receive by the new dwellings. The next issue is the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished. And I've gone through that in my memo with some of the values. The property immediately to the north of the applicant's property, 229 Pleasant Street, at the time of the memo, was assessed for $370,700. The new assessment is $343,500. The property across the street at 226, 226 Pleasant Street is assessed for $343,500, which is the same assessment that it was in 2018. The property at 208 Pleasant Street was assessed for $470,900. It's assessed for the same amount this year. One of the people who... One of the people who have submitted an objection to this, they're the owners of the property at 229 Pleasant Street. I will note that my client's property was assessed for $440,000 last year. This year, it's assessed for $431,500. So, the two properties adjacent to each other have actually gone down. The other properties have stayed the same. The 26 Dartmouth Street, another one of the objections, owners who has objected to this, their assessment in 2018 was $165,300. It's $162,300 this year. So, there really isn't any substantial change in the valuation of the properties. In fact, these assessments, as you can see from the memo, have generally gone up over the past few years. So, the use of my client's property as a multifamily property has not had a negative effect on the values of the property. And we don't believe that the two small apartments would change that at all. So, then we get into the question of the unnecessary hardship, which is the critical question. And the way the statute reads is, "There is no fair and substantial relationship existing between the general purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property, and," and this is important, "the proposed use is a reasonable one." Now, the Supreme Court, in the Harborside Associates versus Parade Residence Hotel out of Portsmouth, addressed that specific issue. And in that case, the applicant proposed a sign to be put on their hotel. The, one of the neighbors challenged that, saying the sign itself was too large. And the zoning board in Portsmouth, Superior Court, and the Supreme Court all said, "Well, let's just take a look at what we're talking about here. We're not talking about a sign in the abstract. We're talking about the sign on a particular building and on a particular location. And when you look at the sign in that location and on that building, is the size of that sign unreasonable?" And the Supreme Court said, "Under those circumstances, no, it's not unreasonable." So, you can't just take this objective or item and separate it from the property that you're talking about. It's the same argument here. We have an apartment complex, if you will, four apartments already. Adding these two apartments that are going to be at the back of the property, trees all around it. Under those circumstances, is this a reasonable use of that property? And I think then we go back to, is it contrary to the spirit of the ordinance? Does it violate the basic terms of the ordinance? We don't believe it does. We think it fits within the spirit of the ordinance and the terms of the ordinance. And is it a reasonable use of that property? We think it is. So, we think that first standard has been met. Again, keep in mind that one of the purposes of the district is to conserve the value of the buildings and encourage the most appropriate use of the land. Well, we think we're doing that here. So, we would believe or ask you to find that indeed, we have met that hardship standard. The second standard says, again, "You can't look at this property without looking at the other things around it as well." And so, considering the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for the uses that we're talking about here, a diverse residential mix, we think that what we're proposing meets the standards of the second criterion, which, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. And when you look at the case law, you have to look at not only the proposal, but the property itself, what it's currently being used for, what the neighboring properties are being used for, and balance it all together. So, we think that, under those standards, we have met the requirements for a variance. Now, one other thing I would like to briefly talk about. The abutters have referred to a case, 9A LLC versus the town of Chesterfield. And I think it would be helpful if you understand the facts of that case. In that case, there's a lake in Chesterfield called Spofford Lake. And in 1999, the town of Chesterfield adopted a lake district for Spofford, the Spofford Lake. And in that new zoning ordinance, it said that two-family dwellings and cluster developments are not permitted, and new lots had to be at least two acres in size. The applicant had a piece of property that had six acres on Spofford Lake and eighty acres across the street. On the six-acre parcel, there was a single building that used to be a rehabilitation center. The septic was on the other side of the street for that building. The applicant proposed two things. They wanted to put a seven-unit or seven individual house lots on the six acres. The town zoning ordinance said, "No, that's way too much for that particular lot, and it doesn't fit with our 1999 amendment to the zoning ordinance." Then the applicant came back and said, "Well, how about if we have six units on that six-acre parcel? And we'll have two 24-unit apartments on the 80-acre parcel." And again, the town said, "No, that's not what we had in mind when we adopted this ordinance in 1999." And the Supreme Court and the Superior Court reviewed the minutes very carefully of the zoning board meeting in which the zoning board decided that we would work with the applicant, but not with this type of density, because that is contrary to what the ordinance intended. So, in our case, our ordinance has a density requirement, but there is the nonconforming lot provision that permits some flexibility in that, where we have at least 3,000 square feet of buildable space for each unit, which we have done. And we meet, basically, all of the other requirements except the density. So, we would, again, request the board to consider our request for the variance, and I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant at this time?
Well, the couple that I had, you answered.
Thank you. You want to add anything?
I think you covered it.
Okay, all right.
You may have a seat.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Yes, please come forward.
So sorry about that. Hi, my name is Russell Jones. I live at 220 Pleasant Street, which is right across the street from Mr. Dugan. I'm here to speak in support of a variance for the property. I was born and raised here in Laconia. I've been blessed to witness the evolution that we have seen here in 60 years. I own a small business in downtown Laconia. I also work over at the Taylor Community. My clients and my students at my business and our organization at the Taylor Community have been adversely affected in trying to have reasonably priced reasonably-priced housing here in this community. As you all know, housing is the foundation of any community, good affordable housing. Paul runs a, or, excuse me, Mr. Dugan, has a very meticulously-kept property. His tenants over there, and it's obviously owner-occupied, his tenants over there are the kind of tenants that are good stewards of the community. This is what we want in our community, good stewards of the community. Because raising the tide will float all boats. That's what we all want. Not only do I own a property at 220 Pleasant, I also have a rental property at 27 Province on the south side of Laconia. And I've owned that for a number of years. And there have been many sales of property down in that neck of the woods, okay, around my property. And what I have seen in the assessment is, the assessment has not only held its value, it's risen in value. And that, I think, is an empirical proof or evidence that having a variance for this property here will also do the same for all the properties in the area. So, I'd respectfully urge all of you to consider a variance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time.
Hi there, my name is Brian Delacy. I'm a resident at 229 Pleasant Street. And we also own 2628 Dartmouth Street, which is not on the abutters list, but it is one property removed from it. And I have attended the previous meetings leading up to this, where it was postponed and deferred. So, I appreciate you folks kind of sticking with it and hanging in there. And I hope not to take a lot of your time, but I do feel an obligation to speak in some detail in opposition to this, because my family and quite a number of neighbors that I've spoken with are opposed to it. Respectfully, my neighbor, Mr. Dugan, with whom I had a number of conversations, we moved in about the same time, I would say, and, but have had no conversations since this arrived in our mail by certified mail. So, to open, and I do have a couple of letters which I will add to the record on the way out, but I'd just like to start with, in some sense, the simplest issue before you is this question of undue hardship. And it's clear in state law, not to start reading case law or cases or, you know, codes or anything like that, but an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if, and you folks know this way better than all of us, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. So, these kinds, and the property cannot be reasonably-used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary. So, it's very clear to me, and I'll come back to this and step through the same five elements that I'm sure you'll tick off at the end of this discussion, where I believe certainly those elements have definitely not been met. And there absolutely is no unnecessary hardship in the spirit of what I think most people would deem that to be. A river running through a property, a highway that goes past it, some not-profit-generated motive to address it. So, in brief, we are 229 Pleasant, and we also own and we invested subsequent to that purchase in 2628 Dartmouth Street. We love the area, we love the neighborhood, we love the people, and we love the neighbors. But my family feels strongly, based on our years being there, that the zoning board of adjustment should deny this application. It's our understanding of statutory law really just requires it, and it requires more than what's shown in the current application. The current application, for instance, talks about affordable housing. I don't think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the zoning board of adjustment's responsibility is not to set affordable housing policy for the city of Laconia. The zoning board of adjustment's responsibility and regulations, at least as I read it on your website, is to effectively restrict and restrain the, and have people adhere to the zoning regulations that are in place. So, we have a number of high-level concerns, the major of which, of course, is the nonconformance on density for the residential general. In fact, as you may have done the calculations, this isn't even in conformance with the residential apartment, which is the higher-density zoning that's further down the street towards the, for us, and this may not be much of a legal concern, I suppose, but certainly loss of privacy, increased noise, increased water runoff and flooding. This is actually a fairly significant issue that people have commented on. You may or may not know this area, but the back yards of these areas on Pleasant Street, on the odd side of Pleasant Street, are susceptible to flooding. And in particular, the, so I guess it would be the, well, the abutter side of Dartmouth Street is the same thing. They're very susceptible to flooding. And so, if you start putting in more impervious surfaces in terms of additional parking and things like that, where is the water runoff going to go? Increased congestion, I heard what the representative said about older people and, you know, that doesn't strike me as that's the typical renter today. And the people who don't drive, doesn't strike me that that's the typical renter today. And in addition, there's a talk, there's a fair amount of talk about affordable housing. I didn't see anywhere in the application a schedule of what the rents are. And as you'll hear, at least one neighbor said, based on what they know about the rents, it wouldn't be considered affordable in their view of things. So, we really are concerned about this undue concentration of population. I'm a big supporter for affordable housing. I'm a big supporter for adequate housing for people. And as you'll see in the documents that I submit, there are quite a few properties in this neighborhood which are abandoned, underdeveloped, underutilized, some of which, in fact, Mr. Dugan looked at, at the same day I looked at, that have gone into bankruptcy and that could better be utilized for making affordable housing and thereby lifting all boats in the area, as they've said. So, we have a number of questions. One is, what's the current green space percentage of the subject property? Seems to me it's low, seems to my neighbors it's low, and it's only going to get worse. And that is, I believe, part of the zoning ordinance. What's the current rental income, I asked, it's not listed in the schedule. What's the proposal for the parking layout? It just wasn't clear to me. I have seen vehicles parking on grass in their property. And we all do it on occasion, you got to move in, you got to move out, but the cars have to go somewhere. Parking is probably not going to affect us, because the parking is on the other side of the property. In the designs that you've seen, you'll see that there are gas lines at the back of the house that are sort of behind the stairway going up to the second-floor units. It's my understanding that violates code. I don't know how you can move those gas lines, but at this point in time, it certainly is, it appears, a fire trap. Drainage is an important issue. And if you approve this, if you were to approve this, which you may well approve it, it opens the floodgates for all of the properties on this street as a precedent. So, what you have here with their nonconforming property, it's not a precedent, right? It's not a precedent-setting, nonconformance situation. Your decision here would become a precedent-setting situation. So, for instance, the property right next door, 229, which I'm somewhat familiar with, could easily qualify for six units. The property across the street, which has a significantly larger parcel of land at the same density, could qualify for 15 units. Is this really what the Pleasant Street neighborhood is intended to be? I really don't think so. In terms of some specifics, the reference was made to the Laconia tax records. The Laconia tax records show a slightly smaller parcel of land than what for the applicant's property than what's shown in your application before you. So, let me just, if I could, run through some of the neighborly comments that were over the past couple of months, as you bump into people. They say things, right? So, one thing...
But, Your Honor, this, I mean, Chairman, this has not been submitted before. And if these people aren't here to testify, I find it very difficult.
Sir?
I want to go on the record objecting to this.
That's fine.
Thank you.
My goal is to spend less time than the applicant spent in presentation on their proposal, so I'll try and move right along. But, the first comment is one of the neighbors saying, it's turning into an apartment complex. Not residential housing, not multifamily housing, not, you know, multi-use, or it's an apartment complex when you get to these numbers, okay? It's a violation of common sense, understanding what city ordinance is requi... Yes, go ahead.
Are these comments written and signed by someone?
They're not signed.
Okay. Really, then it's hearsay?
Sure.
Unsubstantiated hearsay, so you may speak because you have your time, but remember it is just hearsay at this point.
I respect that. People, I feel, and speaking, this is based on conversations with people who live both on Pleasant Street, up and down, as well as on Dartmouth Street, at multiple addresses, that, and it's tough to get up in front of your neighbor, you guys know this, right, and say, I don't agree with what they want to do. It's really tough. It's probably not that easy even to get up in front and say, I support what they want to do, but it's a lot tougher to get, particularly when we're in the fourth meeting into when this is, you know, was on the panel. There's real concern about increased traffic, getting out of Pleasant Street, the driveway that we're at is a time-consuming thing. Over the weekend, somebody actually stopped, which was really pretty nice, and let me pull out. The prior owners, their daughter was T-boned, basically backing out of the driveway. Additional traffic is only going to make that more worse. One big thing, and, you know, people talk about justice and the character of the neighborhood. I don't know if you folks have seen this, but the Chamber of Commerce did this beautiful sort of booklet on the historic homes of Pleasant Street, right? And so, just for the benefit of people in the audience, and it's just, it's mostly like a photo album, and they look at who the owners were through the years. So, that property that you're looking at now is the Pittman House originally, right? It was owned by the Pittmans, Pittmans, back in the day. And there is a certain, it's not a historic district, as I understand it, but it has a character that the zoning, I believe, requires, well, at least it supports maintaining that character. So, we've talked about water runoff. We've talked about, should 221 Pleasant really be considered affordable housing when you have no evidence before you what the rents are? I don't believe that's true. I also don't believe it's the responsibility of this esteemed body to make affordable housing discretionary judgments as to what should fit into what zoning areas. There is concern, legitimate, I think, about added burdens on the infrastructure, trash, sewer, at what point do commercial, you know, dumpsters become an issue? Noise is an issue, even currently, in terms of either air conditioning systems or other noise-making systems that, and clearly, a big concern is the green space. I talked a little bit about the number of units in the current plan and the density that it would afford, and if you just go right down any of these other single-family homes, any of which could be, I guess, by right converted to two-family homes, by design, according to these, density could really increase the density from, based on just a half a dozen homes, 11 residences to 47 residences. So, it's my understanding that really the job of this body is to regulate and restrict. It's not to empower, it's not to facilitate, it's not to enact affordable housing strategies. It's to essentially enforce the zoning that's in place. The following goals of Laconia zoning ordinances are clearly spelled out, as I understand it. Lessen congestion in the streets. This is not going to do that. Secure safety from fires, panic, and other dangers. This is not going to do that. Promote health and the general welfare. It certainly is not going to do that for my family. Provide adequate light and air. This certainly is going to change the sightlines in our property, on both properties, actually. Number six on the goals of the Laconia zoning ordinances is prevent the overcrowding of land. What we're doing is creating overcrowding of land if additional units are approved in that location. So, anyways, in closing, it's our understanding that New Hampshire state law allows for you folks to only grant this sought-after variance if the evidence indicates that all of the following conditions are met, and you can tick them off better than I can. One is that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. I strongly believe that it will be, particularly for this neighborhood. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. It won't be if you allow increased density beyond what is allowed under the current zoning. Substantial justice may be done, in some sense, for the owner, and the previous presenter indicated the importance of both understanding what goes on around it and also the importance of private property rights. And I believe those private property rights are not just for the applicant, but also, certainly, for the abutter or the abutters. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. I find that troubling. The already cited instances where valuations, tax assessments have fallen. There are quite a number of, which I'll submit in the document before the end of the evening, quite a number of properties that are available in the immediate area for relatively small amounts of money. And generally speaking, if you follow the market, the prices have been generally falling over time. So, and the last one is this literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance with respect to unnecessary hardship. There's absolutely nothing in the application that indicates any unnecessary hardship. There's plenty there that sort of encourages either more profitability or more money available for maintenance and things like that, but that kind of goes back to your decision, and we purchased these properties at roughly the same time. We purchased the property knowing what was next door, they purchased the property knowing what they had. And so, my hope is, in really the most sincere terms, because we do love Laconia, we do love the neighborhood, and we do really enjoy the neighbors who are abutted, and we would like to preserve that for the years to come. Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is your property at 229, is that a single-family residence?
It is.
And that's all it is in that?
It's all it is. And it's a big single-family residence, and I'll be honest with you, when we bought it, the person from whom we bought it, and you can look at the records, it was on the market for a pretty long time, okay? So, this is all public record, you can do your homework. I understand the burden of people sustaining, maintaining, and these homes, right? You've got to heat them, you've got to paint them, you've got to fix them. It's hugely problematic. But I'll tell you, pumpkin fest this weekend, you've got to think people walking by up and down Pleasant Street, or the kids on the, you know, on the way back from school, or the running club that goes through there on Sunday mornings. It's, and anyways, I think people still, to this day, appreciate it, and I think it's an attraction in a very positive way for Laconia, and we're fortunate to have ended up there. So, I guess I would say that it is a single-family. When we bought the house, to be perfectly honest with you, the people who sold it to us basically begged to keep it a single-family. And what you'll see, if you look closely at the roadmap of Pleasant Street, is that we're kind of the front line of what's left of the old Pleasant Street. The multifamily, the four-unit, the five-unit, the six-unit, it all begins down at the city center. And that's no surprise, and you've made, you've issued variances in the past for the house on the property, and that is an RA zone, as you know. So, but the preponderance of the properties up to our property, those are the bigger multifamily. And the back end of Pleasant Street, from us on the way back, it's true, there are some small, single, there are some smaller multifamily properties, but the vast majority of them are single-family. And I guess I kind of feel to the person who sold it to us that we're kind of holding the line here, and I guess I'd ask you to hold the line here, too. Because if we don't, there's absolutely no reason why we, or the people next to us, can't make the case for the same density that you will set as a precedent. And I guarantee you, what you'll see is these large homesteads be split up into multifamily, multi-unit apartments, condos, and we do that, you know what? We could do that in a heartbeat, right? And it's, but we just don't think it's the right thing to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? I bring it back to the board for any questions of the applicant.
I do have one question, Mr. Dugan.
Absolutely.
And it does go to, how many parking, well, it goes to parking, how many parking spaces are there now?
Eight.
Nine.
You have four in the garage, are we counting those four?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight.
Eight now.
Eight now.
Right.
And...
Actually, I know, and we were planning to add two.
You were planning to add two, and...
If you, yeah.
Would you be adding additional pavement?
No.
The site plan shows it as gravel.
It's gravel.
It's going to be gravel, not pavement. If you look at the existing conditions, site plan, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine parking spaces existing on the existing site plan. We're proposing to add two spaces opposite the garages, parallel spaces on gravel. My understanding from the plan is that we meet the minimum green area of 60% of green area as well. We have, the existing green area is 59.04. It's proposed to be 56.55 with the gravel. So, we're just, if I'm reading that correctly, we're in that ballpark.
Okay, so in other words, you're not adding any pavement?
No, we're not.
Okay.
And we're not changing the footprint of the building, so we're not changing the lot either, we're putting these on top of the existing structure. So, there's no additional lot coverage issue that we're talking about, we're just converting some of that area that into the gravel parking for those two spaces.
Okay, is there any other questions of the applicant?
That wasn't going to be my question.
I don't think so. His application, he states that you're going to be, you're going to be, would be building everything to code, and obviously, if the variance passed and you've got the building permit, it would be inspected, and nothing would be put in that was not up to code.
Well, it would have to be up to code, correct?
Yeah, so, and the questions that were raised regarding hazards would be dealt with.
Right.
So, no other questions? Closing comments?
I think we're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I think my concern is with this gentleman in the back of the room was talking about setting a precedent, and it's pretty, it's fairly dense over there at the present time, and we're proposing to make it more dense or denser.
Precedent-setting, to me, is a very important thing, as it is and should be with everybody. But one should also realize that every, the zoning law is that every property has to sustain itself in its own. In other words, one, if a variance is accepted on one property, doesn't necessarily guarantee its acceptance on another property, okay? So, that itself...
Sure helps in making a case.
It helps in making a case, yes. But it doesn't necessarily guarantee any right to do anything. So, you know, but I agree with you on that because it's very cautious in some ways of ensuring that when things are done, that's why we have the discussion, to make sure that if something is approved, then that the board has looked at it very closely and has made that determination that it is far better for the interests of everything than it isn't. And when we disapprove stuff, because we've done that, too, it is for the exact same reason, that it did not fulfill all of what we felt it should have done. So, and I think that's how we maintain our abilities to control that precedence in it, at least, you know, whether we approve it and don't approve it. So, and I hear you in fill that one. Any other discussion? There were discussion of runoff, added runoff, and the garage is already there, and to me, it would be built on top of the garage, so the existing runoff would be the exact same as it would be.
It's essentially to be the same. And if there were problems or issues or concerns, then I would assume that the applicant would be willing to address them in the construction. But I don't, since we're not adding, we're not adding any more coverage, we're not putting up a building that is not already there, I don't see that it increases the amount of runoff.
No, I see, I agree with you there, yeah, I mean...
With the pervious paving.
The same amount of rain is going to fall, and it's going to pretty much land on the same...
Whether it falls on the garage roof or it falls on the apartment roof.
It's either going to fall on the apartment roof or the garage roof, but it's going to fall on a roof already.
And I don't, I don't think that, and I do understand your concern about setting the precedent, but on the other hand, we do also evaluate each application and each lot on its own merit. And if someone came and asked to put an eight-unit or a 10- or a 12-unit parcel, building on one of these parcels, we would look at that lot and decide, and get evaluated. I don't think that you can just automatically, my feeling is that I don't want to automatically deny something because I might set a precedent. Because we have, we have had cases come before us, applications come before us where we grant it, and then we get essentially the same thing, we deny it, because the lots are different, because the circumstances surrounding each presentation or each parcel is different. So, I think if we can look at it in that, that, look at it from that aspect, keeping in mind that we wouldn't want to set the precedent to overburden a property, but looking at this property saying, for example, that this is already a property that already has units on it, we're not adding to any coverage, we're simply raising a building, it's different from expanding to the point of trying, if they were asking to build a separate apartment building, for example, or a freestanding unit and convert that to apartments, I might feel differently. Or if they were looking to pave more, then that would be something that I would, I would take into consideration.
Could you refresh me with, when does it become a multi?
Family.
Family from a...
Three or more units. It's either a single-family or two-family, or if it's three or more, it's a multi.
It's a multi-family.
It's a multi. It already is a multi-family.
Yeah.
So, all right, so it's not changing that condition?
The use is essentially not changing. It's still multi-family, it's going to be multi-family. And to me, the use of the word complex, I don't see that as a complex. And maybe that's just my mindset, I mean, to me, a complex is a big brick or a big building with...
Windows.
Windows and dozens, really, and dozens of rooms.
Well, that's not even a complex still. A complex would be where you have multiple buildings.
And that, that's true, too.
And guard towers.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have complexes all over the place, I just don't see that when you take it home and you divide it up, that turns it into a complex.
Right.
So, I don't think that necessarily means we're turning this into an apartment complex, or that the applicant would be turning it into a complex. I think the applicant meets the first three. I don't think it's possible to determine pro or con whether the values of the surrounding properties would be diminished, because in this market, assessments are so... assessments are so volatile anyway, they seem to be going up and down, and you don't, sale prices go up and down, I don't think that's a question.
But the question is, would it have an adverse effect on it by adding two more apartments?
And I don't think it would.
Because it would not change the character or provide any vehicle for creating something different than what's already there.
I think what's already there is a multi-family in a mixed-use neighborhood. And yes, granted, the preponderance is single-family or two-family, but there are multi-family units in that area, and it may be on the cusp, but again, it changes, it does change somewhere. And the, in regard to what the applicant would charge for rent or what's considered affordable...
That's not our...
That's not, that's not our purview anyway.
That's not our purview anyway, he'll charge what the market will bear, everybody, you know, I mean, that would be a reasonable expectation.
I wouldn't even take into account affordable, I would simply take into account perhaps the availability of more housing.
How many families are looking for one-bedroom homes?
I think that you'd be surprised.
You wouldn't be looking for a family, obviously, I don't think a family's gonna go for a one-bedroom, a couple perhaps, or a single.
It would be a couple who liked each other a lot, or a single person.
Yeah, or a single, truly. I mean, now, if I were, if I were to sell and move, I would be looking for a one-bedroom. I would be looking to downsize into a one-bedroom, so it would be for a single.
Yeah. I agree with you on the first four criteria that need to be met, I think all four of those are met. The only thing I wrestle with...
Is hardship.
Is the hardship and the one clause, and just to show you where I am, is literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because, and then we go to the second method of determining hardship, and the one clause that says, "The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance." It already is being reasonably used.
But we only have to pick one, we either have to do A or B, we don't have to meet both of those.
I know that.
We take one and...
And I'm going to be, I'm going to be only...
But if, but if he, but if he can prove it under A, A1 and A2, then he meets the clause. And I think the proposed use is certainly reasonable.
I do believe the proposed use is reasonable, it's the, okay.
And if you're going to strictly ignore A and A1 and 2, and go to B, then you do, I would have an issue.
That, okay.
But if I use the first one...
So, so you're good with clause one, no?
In particular, in particular because it's a reasonable use.
Yep.
And I think that...
Well, it's an and, and not an or.
I know, I know.
Okay.
And, yes, the only one I would have...
So if we go on, if we were to use the first...
The only, the only one I would have some reservation on is A1. And I would ask somebody to convince me that A1 is met.
Because zoning trumps master plan in the hierarchy of things.
Between the general purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
Right.
I think, I don't think you can absolutely say that no relationship exists, it does. But is the addition of simply two one-bedroom units substantial enough to warrant denying the application? Is it that big? Is it that major?
Is it that major?
Yeah.
No, I, I was hoping someone could talk more about this, that's what I wanted to hear.
Is it that major that the harm done to the public is so substantial?
I don't see that.
Without ways what, what the harm would be to the applicant if it were denied. And so that's, I don't think there's that, I don't think, for me, the harm to the public...
Would it be like the character of the neighborhood's gonna be changed?
Well, that's exactly it, I don't believe that the character of the neighborhood...
The values are gonna be, all of the other four...
All of the other four bleed into that one.
Bleed into that, because if, if there is more harm to the neighborhood, then...
Benefit to the applicant.
Then the applicant, then the other four would be, there's other issues in there.
Right, and I don't see any other issues.
And I truly don't see any other issues.
I don't see any other.
So I don't see that there's more harm to the public...
Right.
By granting the variance.
Okay.
I think that any issues can be met. I think that since they're single, it's a one-bedroom, obviously, large families aren't going to be coming in. I'm reassured by the owner being on-premise, and I realize that that can change when, and if the property is sold, I realize that can change.
Because that, that's what I'm, that, you know, we do have to think in perpetuity, just, I agree.
But that can happen anywhere.
That can happen anywhere.
And...
So...
I mean, they could move out at one point and rent the main house part, so...
Can I take that as a motion to approve?
I would make it as a motion to approve.
All of what you just said?
For the reason, I believe that...
I was watching her, so, she meticulously been taking notes on that, so...
I don't believe it, I do not believe the variance is contrary to the public interest.
Okay.
I feel that the applicant has gone to great lengths to ensure that all code enforcement will be met, that all safety provisions will be met, that parking, ample parking will be provided, and that parking will not be paved area, reducing the green area of the lot itself. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, the applicant is going to ensure that the general character of the neighborhood is going to be maintained, and these are small one-bedroom apartments in a multi-family unit where there are already a number of multi-family homes existing. Substantial justice is done in granting the variance by, as the applicant points out, providing housing of a type that is definitely needed in Laconia, and granting the applicant the ability to make full use of this property. The value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The house, when I drove by it, it certainly looked like it was kept in meticulous condition, and I can't believe that the applicant would allow it to be constructed in anything but a workmanlike manner, and the code enforcement would, and building inspectors would ensure that all upgrades and changes would be done appropriately and properly. And I don't think it can be substantiated one way or the other, whether values would be impacted by the addition.
Yeah.
And the proposed, as to the literal enforcement of provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. For number two, clearly, the proposed use is reasonable, it is permitted in the area, it's already, already a multi-use home in an area with a number of multi-use families, family dwellings, and I do believe that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property in that I don't believe that benefit to the public would outweigh the harm that would be done to the applicant in denying it, denying the variance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion.
Did you indicate that you're using the gravel parking space as green space?
The gravel, as long as it's not paved over and it remains pervious.
Has that changed? I didn't think you could use one area for two purposes.
We, well, you could use one area for two purposes. We generally do not consider gravel to be pervious. There are times when it could be, but usually when it's used for parking, it's packed down to a point where, over time,
It becomes smaller.
It's not really pervious. I mean, it does absorb some water, but there will be some runoff.
And I think if you were concerned about that, then we could put a addition requiring drainage mitigation?
I think that's something...
That, that planning...
You wanna put a condition on for us to look at the...
To look at the, look at the parking and just the construction...
Additional parking area, yup, you can do that.
Not sure it's adequately done.
Make sure that drainage is adequately mitigated and that there won't, it won't contribute, exacerbate any potential drainage issues.
So does that work as a condition?
At least for the parking. No, that's, that's alright, I was just, just trying to address your concern about the drainage and the parking.
Okay, so we have a motion, we had a second, we have a condition set.
That, planning...
Any other discussion of the motion?
I have none.
There being none, all those in favor of the motion? All those against? That it indicates that it passes four-one. One-four, whatever, it passes.
No, it passed four to one, she made the motion in the affirmative.
So four-one.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is application zero-zero-three-one, variance nine-fifty Main Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Six, Section two-thirty-five thirty-five B, side setback to allow for the renovation of an existing building and the retention of an additional portion of the existing building beyond what was previously approved in two thousand and eight. Would the applicant come forward, introduce herself for the record, and tell us how we might help?
Thank you for meeting tonight and considering my request. My name is Paul McManus, and, and I'm located at nine-fifty North Main Street in Laconia. Have an office there that is an optometry office, and have come before your board in June of two thousand and eighteen, requesting a a variance for the construction of a new building at our office where we're located right now. The original thought for the construction was to completely start fresh, remove the old building, and to build the new building. And we presented plans for that, the thought being that we would need to do that so that we would make sure that we had complete control of all of our drainage, because we were having, we wanted to make sure that the site plan would make sure we had maximal drainage from Pleasant Street onto North Main Street. But after we had our, our estimate of the cost of building a brand-new building, and then also, which was, you know, rather expensive, we began to think of maybe reconstructing or redesigning our present structure to accomplish the same task. And because we realized that, that the drainage site plan was so good that it, that it allowed for an excellent drainage of all waters with our existing elevation, then we realized that maintaining our present structure and then just adding on to it would be a much more reasonable solution and would cost us a lot less money to do that. And the, the map before you of the building layout demonstrates the fact that the building here in the parking lot is very much the same as the proposal that was approved back in two thousand and eighteen. The existing structure is laid out, and the, in the dotted line, the bold black line is the line of the new structure that has been previously approved. But the area that's shaded in the darker gray is the area that that is part of the existing building now, that lies on the foundation that supports the structure above. And that area in the original draft would have been removed and moved forward, but the, in removing that structure, because that portion of the structure rests on the foundation below, it would impact the integrity of the building above it, and therefore, cost a lot to remove it, rebuild a new foundation, and firm it up to a point where it would support a new structure, the whole structure above it would have to be removed, completely rebuilt, rather than just keeping it the way it is now and then renovating it. So the request is that we be allowed to maintain the, the existing structure, the portion of the existing structure that is there now, rather than to have to remove it according to the, the design of the original approved structure. This would, this space that remains would be used for the mechanicals of the building, the heating, the electrical, any air conditioning needs, storage. And it wouldn't be used for patient care, because the footprint of the patient care area would stay the same as it was in the original draft that we did one year ago. This would be only for effectively use of mechanicals and storage, as I say, because one would be in the basement, which would be steps downward, one would be in the, would be six steps upward, which would not be patient access area, because our design originally was to have all patient access on the same level to allow for handicapped access that would improve patient mobility and patient access to all of our rooms. So, the request is to allow us to maintain the, the existing structure in the dark shaded area. It would increase the area that, that butts up against our neighbor in the northerly portion of the building. But it's, because it's a small area, would allow for a lot of cost savings relative to the reconstruction of the, of the building, and therefore, would allow the, the whole proposal to go for a lot more smoothly. Do you have any questions?
Questions of the applicant?
I do, so, we're not looking at this dark line anymore, you're going, stick with the existing building, and I recognize this dark gray area, something that already exists, so what I'm gonna see in the end, is this existing building with a shaded, no?
No, no, the, the existing building is there now, the, the dark area around it was the footprint of the new building.
Right.
Proposed building, that's already been approved last year in June. That was approved as the new construction outline footprint.
Right.
And it is, it would be exactly the same in this request, except...
That piece there.
We ask that we be allowed to, to effectively leave this portion of the gray shaded area existing, so that it maintains the integrity of the structure there and prevents us from having to remove it, and then have to rebuild it all over again, just because the foundation wouldn't support it.
So basically, you're adding on, you're gonna renovate the interior of the building and add on within that bold footprint?
Well, right now, yeah, so where the, where the bold, where the dotted line is, is our existing building. So we would, we would change the wall structure to add the, basically the white space, the white space between the dotted line and the bold line would be added on, and that would match the original footprint that was approved last year. But we can do it by maintaining all the levels at the same point, and building floors and such to bring the level up to a level all the way across, rather than having to knock everything down and rebuild it back up again.
Instead of going new construction, if I can paraphrase, instead of going to new construction, you're gonna do an extensive remodel of the existing building.
Right, exactly. That's, that's it, and that would save quite a large sum of money and would actually make the project a lot more doable, you know, for the same eventual outcome, and the same patient care access areas and so forth. So, just doing it in a different way, and, and of course, you know, if I, when you start a project like this, and, and I'm not... and, and I'm not in the building business, so sometimes you don't understand what all the, what all the hazards are of building a new building versus renovating an, an existing building. And so here, I've gone through the whole process and kind of come to this conclusion that, well, maybe I should have done it this way in the first place, but, okay, we're doing it back way around.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
Not at this time.
There being none, I'd like to go ahead. You may sit down for a second.
Okay.
I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Barry Winar. I'm the abutter to the north of Mr. Manus' property. And we've talked about this and it's already been approved. The footprint is essentially the same. He's going to move the building forward several feet and we haven't had a problem with that. Him retaining that shaded gray area really doesn't impact my property or the, or the integrity of our property line in any way. So I'm, I'm in agreement with his proposal.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public was to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time. Introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one else in the public was to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for questions of the applicant.
Nothing of the applicant.
Is it something part of the discussion?
Well, I have a question, I have a question for, for Dean.
Go ahead.
And this is more procedural than anything. There's a variance for him to build what is already outlined in dark that's been approved by this board.
Correct.
Okay. This, is this a whole new variance? Or is this an adjustment to the, to the variance that's already granted? I, I, and maybe that, I, I don't know if I need the applicant for that or not. That's more of a technique.
You could look at it either way. I view it as a new variance because he's increasing the non-conformity by changing the plan. He's, he's maintaining some of the building that was there that originally was going to go away. And, but, in a, in a, essentially, you're modifying the original variance, but it really is a new request.
So you're, so you, in your mind, you're looking at this as just a whole new variance?
Right.
For the shaded area.
Just for the shaded.
Just for the shaded area.
Just for the shaded area.
I mean, he has the variance for the, for the front and, and the rest of the property. And he's been through site plan to show where the drainage and the parking and all that is, is going to go, so.
Okay. All right. That answers my question. Thank you both.
You're very welcome. Any other questions of the applicant? Any closing comments, sir?
I appreciate your, your, your consideration of this. It's something that we've, we've been working on for quite some time and we're, we're excited about the project and keeping our office here in Laconia in a spot that we're located in is ideal for patient care, easy access to Main Street and, and people know where we are. We serve a large area, a rural area from, from Conway all the way down to Concord. And so we appreciate being able to stay there and to be able to provide, you know, better services to our patients.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I need to say or not, but he's been my eye doctor for, for, since I've been here, so seventeen years now. So I do not receive anything, benefits of this whatsoever. I don't, you know, but just in case, I just wanted to let that know.
Get an extra lollipop on the way home.
I don't get an extra lollipop. So that being said, if there's no other questions of that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the board for discussion.
I have no problems.
I have, I have nothing to add or subtract to that. I just wanted that clarified if.
Such a small adjustment.
As what we were, what we were actually voting on, if, you know, that's all I wanted.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
I've moved to approve application zero two zero one nine dash zero zero three one for nine fifteen North Main Street for a variance from two thirty five thirty five B for a, introducing into the side step back, the twenty-five foot side step back. Small portion of the existing building will be allowed to remain in that area while the reconstruction renovation of the existing building proceeds. The variance is not contrary to the public interest. It doesn't have any impact at all on anything with regard to the public, any impact on life safety, no impact whatsoever. Fire, schools, public utilities, anything. The spirit of the ordinance is observed in granting the ordinance. He already has a variance to build the main structure. This simply allows the remaining foundation to, the existing foundation to remain. It does substantial justice in permitting the applicants to make the optimal use of the foundation and building as it exists. The values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished and the unnecessary hardship is that they are working to renovate an existing building which already has an excellent drainage and parking plan. And this small area remaining will permit them to achieve that, that goal.
Okay, we have a, have motion, we have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion.
Right.
That the record indicate the motion passes five one. So it's been a request. We're going to have a break for just a few minutes, so. To make his exit. Who we're with, what? If everybody is left that is here, we're going to go ahead and get started with the next application, which is, I have Morning Side Drive.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Now, I got mixed up again. Morning Side Drive. So the next application is going to be thirty-two variance, eighty-eight Morning Side Drive variance. Applicants question variance from Article six, section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B, rear setback to allow for dimension installation of a seven-foot floor by seven-foot-two shed. Applicant, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might help you.
My name is Brendan Florio, eighty-eight Morning Side Drive, Laconia on Lake Opech. And what we would like to do is erect a small Rubbermaid shed. It's a pre-made type shed. You can buy them from Lowe's and some of the other big box stores. It's a vinyl-type wall-constructed unit. And we'd like to put it down by our dock. That's about, it'll be twenty feet off the shore. The, we can't, the, I think the setback is supposed to be fifty feet. But fifty feet would put it in the middle of a rain garden. When we rebuilt this home nine years ago, we were required by the state to do a rain garden for, for water area and put vegetation in there. And if we went fifty feet back, it would put it in the middle of the rain garden. It would, it would be quite a distance from the dock as well. It's to store water sports toys, like tubes and water skis and things like that. So there's a good spot that's twenty feet straight off the dock and it's in a, a kind of a tree grove area where the tree limbs are low and it would create nice shade, blend in with the, with the background. There's quite a few sheds in our community, which are, which are permissible by our association. A lot of them are significantly larger than ours, the ones that, the one that we're requesting to be erected. The shed would not impede with anybody's view of the lake as well, including my abutters. Like the rest of our property, it'll be kept in pristine condition. It's pretty simple to keep one of those in good condition. Another thing, if we moved it fifty feet from the shore and went in a rain garden, which we couldn't do, it could be moved to the side a little bit, but it would put it right in the middle of the lawn, which certainly wouldn't be very nice or aesthetic. And by putting where we're proposing, it'd be convenient for our use and it would keep it about, I think the measurement was twenty-two or twenty-four feet away from the abutters property line. So it would keep it at a real good distance. If we had to go back fifty feet, it would put it about thirteen feet from the property line because the property line comes in on an angle. So the proposed spot would be perfect for us and it wouldn't bother the neighbors.
Where on this schematic here is, is the shed going to be located? I can't find it.
I did find it. I, oh, on that one.
Yeah.
It's got a hand-drawn one. Looks like it's going to be right about there.
Yeah, I'll show you. So it's clear.
It's going to be right in around there, right?
Yeah, let me move it back. Now, let's see.
It'd be there?
Here's the dock. Now, it would be here. Yeah.
Well, there's one here. I got this hand drawn.
It's that white spot. Oh.
I got a hand-drawn one that shows.
Yeah, the hand-drawn one.
Yeah.
If you pass, yeah. I think it's the first picture. There it is. Should have gone to the person.
I assumed it was going to be right there.
I thought it was going to be.
Right off in twenty feet.
You're, you're close. This, this hand-drawn one.
Yeah, it was, that other picture made it look like it was over there.
This hand-drawn one?
How far is this from here to here?
Twenty-four feet.
Than the colored one?
It had to go fifty, but put us right in the center of this rain yard. Could move it over, but then be in the middle of the lawn. And we're trying to keep it accessible to the dock.
I see it, so.
Oh, okay.
I see it.
All right. I do see it, yeah. I, I saw it on this one.
Yeah, they had me draw so many drawings there. And then copies of copies. It didn't come out that clearly.
You mentioned an association.
Yes, we have an association.
You have the association's approval for that shed?
They, they're permitted. Now, I will say.
They don't, they don't limit you on what you can use for building materials or anything like that?
No, I, I was just told this evening. I didn't know this. I didn't realize it. I mentioned in here that it was a brown and beige because that's the color that they sell them in.
Yeah.
This prefab one at Lowe's, you may probably have seen them there in the parking lot. The association might, it's a might, want it to be more of a similar color to the house, and our house is a gray.
Because our, ours wants it to be in harmony with the home.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, agreed. I understand.
Well, seriously, and it, it can't be metal, it can't be the Rubbermaid things. It has to be.
Our house is all, our house is vinyl-sided and this is vinyl. Our, our, our house has, what do you call it? Clavboard. Everyone's horizontal. This one is vinyl that goes vertical. I don't know how picky, if they'd want to be picky about that. That's, that's something I have take up with them.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. There's all kinds of sheds in our community.
You can get our approval, but if they don't like it.
Yeah.
I do notice he does have his.
He does have the shoreline.
He does have his shoreline protection thing. I.
Yeah, I did that right away.
Yeah.
Same day as this.
Just one question, Mr. Chair, and you could probably answer this, Mr. Chair, but I'll ask, I'll ask him. Is this considered a permanent structure or a temporary structure?
You know.
It's like you're going out and buying this thing and I'm thinking that.
It's not a permanent structure.
At some point, you could just, if you didn't like it or you thought it was ugly or the next guy came in and said, who put this god-awful shed here? You could load it on to something and move it away.
As a matter of fact.
It's not on a foundation.
It's not on a foundation?
It's not on a foundation, no.
So I.
No, my neighbor has a bigger one and he got it from a guy who gave it to him. They loaded it in a pickup and it's twice the size of this and they put it on his property in our association.
It's, it's, so there's no foundation? It's not permanent? It, it's just.
They even said that downstairs. They said, you know, I guess technically, maybe just to cover yourself so you don't have anybody complain or I go through the variance. Because I came in and asked because I didn't want to have anything after. Because I came in and asked, because I didn't wanna have anything after the fact.
Yeah, the ordinance doesn't differentiate between temporary and permanent structures.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it does not.
It just says a structure within the...
It says a structure, so it doesn't differentiate, that's where the...
And some people say, "Oh, just put it up, you don't have anything to worry about." Well, you know, that's not...
That's when you worry.
Yeah, exactly. Let me just go through the painstaking effort of doing it the right way.
And in specific, your hardship is because if you were to obey what the zoning says, it would be in the rain garden, which...
Right in the middle.
Required.
Which is required, which is, which is your hardship. I'm, I'm helping you to define a hardship.
Yes, and that's in the, I have that in the application.
Yeah, and that's your hardship, is because of the location where that garden had to be, this is really the only viable spot for it?
It's the most viable, and it's, and it becomes, what's it say? It blends in more with its surrounding, and it's further away from the abutter.
It's intrusive.
It's a win-win for the, for the abutter and anyone on the street or anywhere else, and us who wanna use it. We wanna keep it as close to the dock, not as far away from the dock as we can.
And if the shoreline people said yes, then I'm not gonna worry about additional runoff from your shed.
I don't think they would've addressed that.
That's what I'm saying. If the shoreline people said it was okay, and my gut is telling me that...
Well, I was, it was, you suggested to me, or told me that I should do the PNR?
PBN, permanent notification.
Right, which I did, and within two days, I had the answer back from them as an email.
You had to standard, they might not consider it, they may differentiate between permanent and...
Well, there's, there's something called a permit by notification, and there's a full shoreline permit, and there's a checklist that if it's under so many, so much impact, you go through the checklist. If you call, if you meet these parameters, you can do what they call a permit by notification. If it's a larger project, then you have to go through the full shoreline permit process, and that whole, it's a much more involved process.
That's a really nice lot. I walked down along the private beach next to the, the association beach yesterday to look at it. It's really beautiful lot. I have to give you credit for that. I mean, it's, no, I mean, it's nicely done. It just looks nice.
It wasn't like that when we bought it nine years ago. There's a lot to do there.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay, so any other questions of the applicant at this time?
I don't have any.
There being none, you may sit for a second.
Sure.
I wanna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public would speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time, introduce yourself for the record. That's record indicate, no one from the public would speak for or against this application? Therefore, I bring it back to the board for any further questions of the applicant or staff.
I have none.
Nothing.
There being none, any closing comments to the applicant?
I just thank you for the consideration. I'm just trying to do things the right way.
And we appreciate that.
That's, that's all I have to say.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
There being, there being no other discussion, like to entertain?
Actually, I did mention about the color, and you, you brought that up, that I'm not sure that it will stay brown. I mentioned it in there, because that's how it's constructed.
That's fine, as long as it stays under the fifty square foot.
If they want me to make it gray, I'll make it gray, but I don't wanna be locked into the color.
Yeah, for us.
That's all.
It's the square footage.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the association's issue, really not ours.
Fifty square feet is fifty square feet, so.
Yeah.
No matter what color it is.
They made me the aesthetics police.
Actually, you wouldn't be surprised.
Okay, like, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
And a motion?
I was just gonna say, I'll make a motion to grant variance request Z zero-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-zero-three-two. Requested a variance from Article two thirty-five, Section three of the zoning ordinance to permit seventy, seven-foot-four-inch, where's that eye doctor? Seven-foot-four-inch by seven-foot-two-inch Rubbermaid shed to be erected near the dock for the storage of boats and related items. Granting the variance is not gonna be contrary to public interest, because there are many sheds there, and this is just one of many. If the variant, number two, if the variance is granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because the small shed is not gonna impede or interfere with any of the abutters. The granting the variance would do substantial justice, because this is pretty standard for this particular neighborhood, and it is, it, it is consistent with the other use, and there are other sheds like this in this particular neighborhood. The values of the surrounding properties are not going to be diminished. I don't know that I need to explain that. The values of the surrounding home are not gonna be diminished, and the unnecessary hardship in this is that there is a pond, a rain garden that is mandated by the Department of Environmental Services that has to be there where it is, and in order for him to fully comply with the way this lot is laid out, he would have to violate the Shoreline Protection Act, which we could not condone, so that does constitute a hardship to me. Anything that anyone wants to add to that, or did I forget something?
We have a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, enjoy your shed, sir. Okay, application zero-zero-three-three EQ twenty-six Teddington Way equitable waiver. Applicant's request an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements from Article six, Section two thirty-five thirty-five B, side setback to grant an equitable waiver of the dimensional requirements for a two-foot-one-inch encroachment into the side setback by the front corner of the house. Encroachment was discovered after completion of the construction, and as-built survey was done. Applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we may help.
Good evening, my name is Romeo Lacass, I reside at twenty-six Teddington Way, and I'm here for equitable waiver of dimension on the side setback. We built this house over the last year, and there were three pins that were set, the two back pins and the right corner pin. It was assumed that the left corner pin was in the transformer pad, and because of this, the, the house was placed in the wrong section, as you can see. So, the corner of the porch encroaches into the setback, two-point-one feet from the corner in. The, the house was being built, it was actually supposed to go lower, but the grade was so steep that the excavator brought it up, and even by doing that, he still had to pour twelve-foot foundation. So, nobody involved with the project were aware of the issue until it was discovered with the as-built, which we just received a few weeks ago. So, the excavation contractor and the owner were aware of the zoning ordinance setback requirements, because we, we had this, a plot plan drawn up originally. So, the, the, it was just a mistake in measurement and assumption that the, the pin was where it was supposed to be located originally, and we didn't know until we got the as-built. The, the encroachment really doesn't affect anybody. Our nearest neighbor to the right is about fifty or sixty feet away from this house. So, we're looking for a equitable waiver at this time, to see if we can keep that the way it is.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
I have a question, Chair.
Yes, sir.
What does this remove, one-point-five feet of walkway along the...
There was about, there was about seven inches of the walkway that came up into the other property.
Oh.
We already moved it.
All right.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Again, it was because of that line that we thought was there.
Oh, yeah. Is there a pin there now?
There is.
Any other questions?
This isn't uncovered.
I'm sorry?
It's just a deck, it's uncovered, there's no...
It's, it's, no, it's a, it's a porch that's covered. I have a picture of it, if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, actually, I would like to. Ah, okay, yeah, that makes a difference to me. It does, make a big difference to me.
A lot of concrete there, too.
Yeah, because other, yes, that makes a difference.
I have a wider one.
And we'll, we'll keep these and add them...
They'll be, you fix it, it's just...
Yeah, that's, yeah, that makes a huge difference, that really, I think that, so that's the corner we're at.
This is the corner.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that just really tells the story. Yeah, it would just an open, we're decked, it's a walkway. Not that.
It's like that five-sided garage?
Really? Exactly, but not, this is, this would be, I mean, getting into foundation and roofs and...
This one right here?
Yes.
We did that to a garage.
We did, I know.
That's what I, that's what I was...
I voted to do that to a garage.
I did, too.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant at this time?
I have none.
There being none, you may sit for a second.
Thank you.
As I go through the formalities here, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That's record indicate, no one from the public was to speak for or against this application, therefore, I bring it back to the board for any further questions of the applicant or the staff. All good? All good?
All good.
Any closing comments? Okay, with that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
No, I think the error was made in good faith, and they made every attempt to, they thought they were, at least the contractor, and struck the home, and in conformity with the setback, and it was just this misguided assumption that the pin was where it was not, actually.
And I, I guess I would point out on these things, how important it is to really have a solid existing conditions survey before you start and to finish. Once again, every, not saying this is the solution, every one of us here has been there for the discussion of a building where the abutters were vehement about the conformity to the setback, and that resulted in a cut-angle building.
Well, there's a little more involved.
There's a little more than that, because...
There was more to that one.
Yeah, they were aware of that during construction and went on anyway.
At the slab level, they were told to stop.
Yeah, and I understand that.
And they continued.
This is something different.
It's something different. It's a whole different era.
But just saying what could happen.
Yes, yes.
I was thinking of that, but this, this, again, that's, that's...
I think everybody here was on the board at that...
Where on the, I was.
That's the precedent thing, where you, you have to consider each lot and each application.
But I'm not seeing anybody here step up and say that they have any great resistance or objections to this.
Objection to it as well, nobody from the, the abutter, obviously.
It wasn't done with malice or intent or anything.
And he wasn't, and they weren't told halfway through to stop.
Yeah, they never, nobody ever realized this until it was done.
They were, the, the other one was told at the slab level, there was a problem.
Not.
Yeah, so, I, I have no, no problem with this waiver, I think they've met the...
That's a shame on them.
Yeah, exactly.
So, anyway, so any other discussion? I can entertain a motion?
I would make a motion to approve, oh, shoot, let's see.
Thirty-three EQ.
It's, yes. Zero-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-zero-three-three EQ twenty-six Teddington Way for an equitable waiver for the two-feet-one-inch of the back-covered porch and deck that extends into the side setback. The encroachment is completely unintentional and was done in good faith when the house was built, was constructed. The error was not discovered until the as-built site plan was done for the home, once the home was completed, at which time they discovered that the pin was actually not at the utility pad and was farther over to the east of the southeast, south-westerly corner of the lot. The, was, they were aware of the setbacks and made an attempt to comply with them, so it was not an outcome of ignorance of law ordinances, or failure to inquire, or any kind of deliberate misrepresentation or bad faith. The violation does not constitute any kind of public or private nuisance, and it will not diminish the value of the other property in the area. The encroachment is insignificant. The, the home, and D, the home is complete, and the cost of correcting that, you couldn't move the home, and the cost of lopping off the corner and correcting the foundation and the roof would be, would far outweigh, there would be no benefit to the public requiring the applicant to, to effect those changes.
Okay, we have a motion?
I have a second.
Have a second? Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, enjoy. Application thirty-four variance on twenty-five McKinley Road. Applicant's request of variance from Article six, Section two thirty-five thirty-five A, front setback to allow for construction of a five-foot-twenty-by-twenty-six-foot farmer's porch. Please introduce Southford Record and tell us how we might be of service.
Hi, my name is Robert Hoy, I'm with Silver Lake Construction, representing the Rochella family at twenty-five McKinley Road. I've attached overhead view of the house. What I have is a five-by-five existing uncovered porch. It's in disrepair, so needs to be fixed. We're looking to fix it and extend it the length of the front of the house. The existing porch is already in the setback, so we're just kinda extending to the sides. And then we would like to cover it as a farmer's porch. Reason being is the homeowner has had some surgeries and finds it difficult to go up on the porch, open the storm door, you kinda gotta back down the stairs and then go back up. So, we'd like to have it wider, so she can go up, set her stuff down, and then enter the house. And then we wanna cover it for a farmer's porch to keep the weather off, the snow and the ice.
Okay, any questions of the applicant?
Is that, I didn't get a chance to see this house by itself today. I usually try to get out and see everything, but somehow I missed this one. Is that a split-level house?
No.
That's a, that's a...
No.
So, is the porch on the, the stair now? Is that on the second floor?
It's like a gambrel, it's...
Excuse me?
No, it's on the first porch. It's, it's a grand gambrel house.
What are these windows down here?
That's the first floor, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a two-story house, gambrel. with stairs, just basically stairs off the front.
Yeah.
And it looks like the front of the house is, is, is actually sitting on the, pretty much on the setback, so no matter what you put into whatever, whatever access you put into that house, it's gonna be extending into the front setback.
Yeah, it's, it's really just an access way.
Really?
I, I mean, a porch to what's there is kinda stretching it. It's like a landing, it's a few steps with a landing, yeah.
Basically a doorstep, yeah.
It's like two or three stairs, maybe, and a landing?
It's two steps and a landing.
Two steps and a landing, yeah. And you wouldn't be going out any further towards the road?
No.
No. As long as it stays within that.
The house was originally built prior to zoning, it's been removed since then, so it is, it is sitting, the very front portion of the house sits right on the setback line. So those stairs do, as you said, they do project into the setback area. The proposed porch is no wider than the current encroachment, it's just an increase in the, basically the bulk of that non-conformity, because it's the full length of the house, but it's a small landing.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? May sit for a second, all those in.
Forget something?
We're opening the public hearing at eight forty-one.
Yeah, I'm opening it up to the public, if anybody from the public would speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one from the public would speak for or against this application, therefore, I bring it back to the board for questions of the applicant or staff. There being none, closing comments? There being none, I close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. Seems reasonable.
Seems reasonable, yeah.
Reasonable enough for a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve application zero two zero one nine dash zero zero three four for twenty-five McKinley Road for a twenty-five, okay, wait a minute, is it twenty-five? Twenty-six foot by five foot farmer's porch to be built in place of the stairs that currently exist into the house. Granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest, this will have no impact on the, on the public, on life safety, health, any, any, any manner. It will actually enhance the value of the property and add to the appearance and give the owner easier access to, into his house. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, it's not negatively, negatively impacting any of the abutters. It would do substantial justice, as I say, it, it enables the owner to more easily and safely access the home and would improve the appearance of the house. Surrounding values of the properties would not be diminished, the addition of this porch would improve the appearance of the home and the neighborhood. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the purpose of the ordinance and the specific application, because the, the house itself is actually built with the front right on the setback, so no matter what kind of access they choose to build, it's going to be in the setback, and the five foot extension with the farmer's porch is, is a reasonable use.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second? Any discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
All right.
Okay, you've been granted your farmer's porch.
I'll send the, the owner will get a letter, and I can put a note just to see if you will copy, say that when you apply for the building permit, you just attach that with it. You just have one last housekeeping item, which is just the calendar for twenty twenty, we just basically just need the, from the zoning board of.
Yeah, did we wanna do?
You had it last month, and then it just kinda.
Oh, oh, that's right.
You, you already made a motion to adjourn, so it just needs a, basically a quick blessing.
I'm going to accept the twenty twenty meeting schedule that was presented?
Does it denote the Tuesdays?
It does, it denotes, the January meeting is January twenty-first, Tuesday, the February meeting is February eighteenth, which is Tuesday. In May, it's May nineteenth, which is a Tuesday, June sixteenth, which is a Tuesday, July twenty-second, uh, twenty-first is a Tuesday, and then when we go to.
Budget season.
Yeah, but those were budget season, the first two were for holidays.
I was gonna say, I knew there was a holiday.
Yeah, the, the other, the other three are budget season, and we, we get booted for budget season.
Oh, oh, we, well.
We lose, we lose our night for budget meetings. So for the first two, and actually the last one, the first one of twenty twenty-one is also a Tuesday because of a holiday.
Okay, all those in favor of the calendar?
There we go.
You'll print us out new ones then, please?
Yeah, yeah, I'll print you out a clean one.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second. Yay, all favor. We're done.
Forty-seven, gotcha.
Too bad, I figured we'd still be.
I figured, yeah.
That's it, that's all I'm gonna say, I figured we'd still be here, I think.
So it's CIP tomorrow, is there gonna be something for money for that fan, so it doesn't make that noise all night long?
Oh, my God.
Cause I'd rate that pretty high.
No, I, I'd rate water in the cooler very high.